Close enough.
Two, one. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome to the July 1st Planning Commission meeting. If everybody can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, if we can go ahead and have roll call.
Commissioner Marsters.
Present.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Present.
Vice Chair Silberman.
Present.
And Chair Harper Pedersen.
Present. Okay. And now, a public comment. And just so you know, public comment is limited to items that are not on the agenda. So is anybody here to speak on items not on the listed agenda? No? Okay, seeing nobody. I'm gonna go ahead and move to approval of the minutes. And we have two sets of minutes to approve. The ones from the 12th, which is the walking tour, and the ones from the last meeting in here, which was the study session. Does anybody have any changes or additions to either either of the minutes, though? Of course, I guess we should go in order. Why don't we do June 12th, since that's the first one? Any changes that are, or additions to the walking tour minutes?
No.
Oh, okay. Can I go ahead and get a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Okay.
Second.
Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm guessing we have one abstention.
And I'm gonna abstain because I was not there.
Okay. Minutes from the 12th are approved. Uh, June 17th, from the study session. Does anybody have any changes or additions to the June 17th minutes?
I didn't see any, for me.
Nope, okay. Can I go ahead and, uh...
I note I watched it on video, so I think I can vote.
Yes, you can. That's right, I feel good about that.
Yeah.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of June 17th, 2013.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, okay. Minutes are approved. Okay, so now we're on to the public hearing. And, um... Procedure for public hearing. The staff presents the report on the history and physical features. Then the applicant, um, follows and the staff... Yeah, the applicant follows and makes a presentation. And then afterwards, members of the community can speak, and then we will go ahead and discuss that. Um... Let's see. Sorry, I'm trying to sum it up. Um, if anybody's interested in speaking, if you could fill out a speaker's form, and that will be delivered up here on the dais. And then, um, the speaker should come up to the microphone. And first, we have, uh, 201 Industrial Road. Jill?
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Jill Lewis, and I'm here to present the request for architectural review approval of a new wall sign for Natera. The property at 201 Industrial Road is located at the north end of San Carlos, immediately west of Highway 101, within a planned development district governed by ordinance number 1312. Natera will occupy Suite 410, the space formerly occupied by Nectar. The applicant proposes to install one internally illuminated channel letter wall sign on the eastern-facing side of the building at 201 Industrial Road, facing Highway 101. The installation will contain about 82.5 square feet of signage, which includes both the logo and the Natera lettering. The letters will be white acrylic with a blue vinyl coating, and the logo will also be white acrylic, but with a green vinyl coating. The sign is four feet in height, with a width of approximately 20 feet, eight inches. The letters and logo will be halo-lit with LED lighting at night, which will cause the letters to have a halo effect... Or, the cause of letters to have a white halo effect and the logo to have a green halo effect. The reason this is before you tonight is that 201 Industrial is located in a planned development. And the ordinance that it's subject to sets a maximum of 240 square feet of total signage for the development. And the municipal code requires architectural review for all new industrial planned community signage, as well as signage visible from Highway 101. This is the daytime versus nighttime. You can see the green halo effect and the white halo effect at night. So this is the cumulative amount of signage for the development. You can see it's below the maximum of 240 square feet for the total, for the development. Uh, it's currently at 219.33 with the addition of this proposed sign. Staff finds the proposed signage to be consistent with both the existing signage on site and also consistent with the purposes of the sign ordinance. These are the four findings that you're being asked to make in considering the sign this evening. And it's recommended that the Planning Commission approve the request for architectural review approval of one internally illuminated sign of approximately 82 and a half square feet for Natera. And this would be the formal motion, should you choose to make it. At this point, I can take any questions you might have.
Does anybody have any questions for Jill? Just, just one question, Jill. Has there been any problems? I understand this is replacing an existing sign. Was there any problems with the existing sign as far as illumination, or any difficulty there?
Nope.
Okay, great. That's my only question. Um, is the applicant here, or...?
The applicant is not here this evening.
Okay. Great. So, thanks, Jill. All right. Anybody have any questions or concerns about the sign? Okay. Well, then, um, can I entertain a motion?
I move that the Planning Commission approve the request for architectural review approval of one internally illuminated wall sign of approximately 82.5 square feet for Natera at 201 Industrial Road, based on the required findings and for the reasons as outlined in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, okay. Sign approved, thank you. And then, uh, we'll go ahead and move on to Item B, which is a monument sign at 1501 through 1599 Industrial Road.
Good evening again. I'm Jill Lewis, and I'm here to present the request for architectural review approval of one new multi-tenant monument sign for the San Carlos Technology Park. The property at 1501 to 1599 Industrial Road is located at the south end of San Carlos, immediately west of Highway 101. And the property is collectively known as the San Carlos Technology Park. The proposed sign will take the place of the two single-faced monument signs that are parallel to Industrial Road. These are the details of the project. The height of the sign will measure eight feet above finished grade, which is the maximum height permitted for a monument sign. The width of the sign is five feet, four inches, and the sign is one foot in thickness. The monument sign will be located 12 feet back from the proposed new driveway entrances and exits, and 24 and a half feet from Industrial Road. The top of either side of the monument has San Carlos Technology Park, and the address numbers in three-quarter inch thick push-through acrylic letters with dark gray vinyl faces that are halo-lit with LED lighting. The individual tenant panels will be pushed-through frosted acrylic plaques, each measuring five inches in height, with the individual tenant names in dark gray vinyl. Graphics a maximum of three inches in height, backlit with LED lighting. The cabinet itself will be aluminum-painted a silver metallic with a satin finish acrylic polyurethane sealant. And the monument will be mounted on a two-inch-tall concrete platform. So the reason this is in front of you this evening is that the sign ordinance requires architectural review for monument signs. And this, again, is the daytime versus the nighttime appearance of the sign. The cumulative amount of signage is below the maximum permitted within this business park, even when considering all the wall signs. Staff finds the proposed signage to be consistent with the existing signage on site and also consistent with the purposes of the sign ordinance. These, again, are the four findings that you're being asked to make when considering the sign before you this evening. And the recommendation is that you approve the request for architectural review for one multi-tenant monument sign for the San Carlos Technology Park. And this would be the formal motion, should you choose to make it.
Does anybody have any questions for Jill?
Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here.
Any questions for the applicant?
I was just wondering whether the, um, the portions of the sign where there's, uh... That are empty, whether those are backlit, it's basically backlit, empty, or are those dark?
And then, Jill, just one question for me. Uh, same question. Uh, is, was there any problem with the sign, the existing signs that'll be replaced?
No.
With this? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Jill, or for the applicant? Because we can bring the applicant up.
I guess not.
No, we can...
Well, it's just, uh...
You want me to bring the applicant up?
Sure.
Thank you, Jill. Can the applicant come forward?
Evening.
Sorry, I just, is it necessary for, like, the empty portions to be backlit? I'm just, I'm not a terribly visual person, but that seems somewhat unattractive and potentially brighter than it needs to be.
I'm sure we can work it out with the, um, sign manufacturer, where they can put some type of cover there.
I'm just trying to envision. I mean, if it, if it normally...
Makes sense.
If the sign like this is normally fully illuminated, even the portions that are empty, you know, perhaps, you know, folks have seen it, and it, it looks good. It's just hard for me to envision it, and it just... When I try and envision it, I envision it somewhat unattractive and unnecessarily bright.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think we can do a vinyl coating on the, on the blank portions so that it wouldn't be illuminated.
Okay.
That would be nice.
Do you want to make that a condition?
Well, I, if other folks feel the same way. I mean, I don't wanna... I'm just, like I said, I'm not a terribly visual person. I was just, from my personal perspective, I was... I've seen lights that perhaps aren't LED like this, where, um, there is, there's actually a blank spot.
Right.
And it just looks kind of bright and tacky.
No, it's a good point.
But maybe with an expensive sign, it's LED, that's not a problem. I don't know. If anyone has seen them.
Yeah. No, I've seen it. It doesn't, it's not very ni... It doesn't look very nice, huh?
Okay.
So, we might need to modify the motion if you...
All right. Any thoughts, staff?
I was gonna say, any thoughts over there?
Erica, sorry about, for the delay. I was just asking Jill if we had approved any examples, because it is, I would agree, that it is difficult to envision what this may look like, um, looking at the pictures that are in the packet and, you know, without actually having seen it. So what we could do in the future, as we kind of look at, you know, more of these signs coming forward, is we can, um, collect some examples for the commission. That way, prior to getting your packet, you can, you know, have some sense of what it may look like in comparing it to other signs that are using the same type of lighting technology. That may be one thing that staff...
My concern is that, I mean, I, what I'm envisioning is unattractive, but at the same time, I don't know this technology, and so I would hate to, you know, create a condition and then make something uglier. But I don't really know how to resolve that. I mean, have, have you folks seen a sign like this, where the, where it's illuminated, and there's a lot of empties, or a number of empty spaces? Because it looks like you are gonna have some empty spaces, right?
Right, and probably not this many. I've usually seen that to, to advertise a vacancy.
Mm-hmm.
For leasing, please call, when they have those blank spots, but not left blank, as far as that many, so...
So I was wondering if we want to go down the road of, of having staff look into whether it actually looks better with the illumination or without the illumination. Yeah, would there be a way to do a motion that kind of gave staff discretion? Direct staff to... Yeah.
For a staff discretion condition? I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let you word that.
I think I could, I think I could do that.
I think you can do it.
I think I could do that.
I'm faithful to you. Thank you very much.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Okay. So then, um, when...
That means you get to make the motion.
I was gonna say, so if you make the motion, just add the tenth condition. With some discretion.
Um, okay. So, I move that the Planning Commission approve the request for architectural review approval of one multi-tenant monument sign for the San Carlos Technology Park at 1501 to 1599 Industrial Road, based on the required findings and for the reasons as outlined in the staff report, on the condition that staff be provided discretion to require the applicant to cover any vacant portions of the sign with something to prevent unnecessary illumination.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Motion passes, thank you. Nicely done.
Yeah, nicely done.
Woo-hoo.
Good recovery at the end.
Yeah. Got our motion guru. All right, so now we're gonna move on to Item C, which is 1001 Chestnut. And it is a consideration of a use permit to modify an existing cellphone tower.
Good evening again. I'm Jill Lewis, and I'm presenting the request for consideration of a conditional use permit to modify an existing T-Mobile installation at Burton Park. The existing wireless facility is mounting, mounted on an existing light pole located at the city-owned Burton Park at 1001 Chestnut Street. The site is owned PK Park, with a general plan designation of park. The area around Burton Park is comprised of single-family residences. Two of the three existing T-Mobile antennas were improved, were approved by the Planning Commission on April 1st, 2002, with the subsequent addition of one antenna, which was approved at staff level on September 26th, 2005. The proposal involves removing the three existing T-Mobile panel antennas and replacing them with six new panel antennas, installing a new 19-inch equipment rack within the existing equipment shelter, installing one new jumper breakout canister and a new hybrid cable. The six new antennas, one pair for each sector, will be substantially the same size as the existing and will be mounted such that the top of the panel antennas is no more than 60 feet above grade. The three pairs of antennas will be mounted to a tri-sector antenna mount and will face outward from the same angles as the current antennas, which is at 300 degrees, 70 degrees, and 195 degrees. This may be a bit difficult to read, so I apologize. The light pole has two carriers co-located on the structure, T-Mobile and AT&amp;T. The proposed modification will increase the number of T-Mobile antennas from three to six total. The AT&amp;T installation consists of six antennas, and no modification is proposed at this time. T-Mobile will mount the new antennas as close to the light pole as possible to reduce the visual appearance. The cables will be enclosed within the interior of the light pole, and the associated equipment will be installed within the existing shelter. So this is the project as viewed from Chestnut Street, both the existing and the proposed. And you can see the close-up view. You're able to see the additional antennas. And this is the project as viewed from Cedar Street. Again, a little bit difficult to see, but you have the existing, and then with the new antennas. This particular proposal would use the existing 71-foot-tall light standard for the purpose of mounting T-Mobile's six new panel antennas. No new antenna support structure would be necessary, and no height extension is necessary. The antennas will be mounted such that the tops of the antennas don't exceed 60 feet above grade, and will be painted a matte gray to blend in with the color of the light pole. Associated ground-mounted equipment will be housed within the existing equipment shelter. This is the required finding for this particular subject wireless facility. The applicant submitted a radio frequency compliance report prepared by EBI Consulting, which found that the maximum ambient radio frequency exposure for someone walking on the ground by the light pole would be 4% of the general population exposure limit, including both carriers. Further, there is a provision in the Wireless Telecommunications Ordinance that requires that T-Mobile provide verification within 45 days of commencement of operations that radio frequency levels comply with FCC regulation and that all equipment complies with the city's noise regulations. While the installation will be readily visible, it's already visible from public view. The support structure is a 71-foot-tall light pole at Burton Park with T-Mobile and AT&amp;T antennas mounted on the pole. The new T-Mobile antennas will be mounted at approximately the same location and as close as possible to the light pole. And the net addition of three new antennas will not be any less aesthetically pleasing than what's existing on the light pole. You're also asked to make these conditional use permit findings when considering this project. Staff believes that the Planning Commission can make all the required findings when considering the proposed modification and upon implementation of the conditions of approval within the draft conditional use permit. Staff would recommend that the Planning Commission approve T-Mobile's request for a conditional use permit for the proposed modification of an existing telecommunications facility at Burton Park. Oops. And this would be your formal motion.
Thanks, Jill. Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here.
Um, does anybody have any questions for Jill?
Not me.
Scott?
So, um... I don't really have an issue with this particular, um, project, but it did sort of ask, at least in my mind, a question. Under policy LU 8.17, it says, "require telecommunications and utility facilities to be sensitively placed, shielded, screened, or lessened from view to the greatest extent possible through design review." And while we probably can't require them to put a fake tree in, as we have in the past,
Right.
it sort of brought up the question in my mind, at what point do we take these older facilities, older poles, and require them to sort of be upgraded to, um, a...
To what we would ask if they were putting a new pole.
What we would expect if they were coming forward. And I'm not, I'm not expecting that that to happen with this project here. But I think that it sort of opens the question, when do we make that decision? And how do we go about doing that? And so, I just would like to have staff consider that for future proposals and maybe give us some direction in, in the future as to when it's appropriate to, to make that type of a change for a, a existing antenna. And I'm not suggesting that we do it tonight or for this particular project, but I'm just suggesting that that's something that I sort of struggle with a little bit, because it does say it's supposed to be screened or lessened from view to the greatest extent possible. And I'll leave it there.
Is there currently a threshold, or...
I don't believe there's currently a threshold in our ordinance that talks about going back and, and retrofitting existing wireless facilities. However, through the design review process, conditions like those could be placed upon projects. And, and we didn't require for this particular project simply because the scale of the change wasn't extensive. But it is something, obviously, that we are mindful for, of, and we put it in our staff report. And it's easy to do that on existing facilities, perhaps where the, excuse me, not existing, but on new facilities where they're in a new location or could be along a scenic corridor or someplace where we need to take more careful consideration of how those visual impacts could be, the impacts that could be placed on a neighborhood.
Well, this would be one funny-looking tree, because you have the lights on the top. So you'd have, like, a little palm tree with lights on the... I know, you weren't talking about this one.
I wasn't talking about this one, but yeah.
That would be... Although, I kinda like the idea of, like, having a little palm tree with the light shining down on it. That could be nice.
Yeah.
And I don't expect this as the last one we're gonna see in the next many years. And so, I, I thought if we could start that discussion now, it might happen prior to future, um, uh, projects coming forward.
Yeah, thank you for that. And there are other things that we could do, like smaller interventions, such as paint through paint, requiring that things be painted to kind of, you know, blend into the sky. I've seen that done with wireless facilities.
Or the surrounding trees.
Right.
I just have one question. Jill, have there been any, any concerns from the neighbors that were notified about additional, about additional noise problems, I guess, from the equipment?
I did not hear from any neighbors.
Okay.
They're probably T-Mobile customers.
Does anybody else have any questions for Jill?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jill. Any questions for the applicant?
Not for me.
Nope. Nope, okay. Great. Thank you. Well, in that case, I would like to entertain a motion.
I guess I'll read it.
Yeah.
"I move that the Planning Commission approve T-Mobile's request for a conditional use permit to increase the number of antennas on an existing light standard from three to six, and installation of associated equipment at 1001 Chestnut Street, based on the required findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report."
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Tower approved. Great, thank you. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on to reports, correspondence, and general information. And can we have a report on recent city council actions?
I don't believe I have any additional news from the last city council hearing. I think... We did talk about the Landmark Commercial zoning district. We did talk about the landmark commercial zoning district. Uh, maybe it was after the first reading, the second reading. I'm sorry, you'll have to excuse me, everything's happening so fast. I thought we already went through this. The second reading of the ordinance was, um, on the, um... Well, it would have been on the, um... Let's see, when did we go to council? That would have been on the... On the 24th of last month. The council passed, um, the, um, staff's recommendation... The Planning Commission's, uh, staff's recommendation to amend the zoning map and zoning ordinance to redesignate the landmark sites as landmark commercial with the minor modifications to the general commercial industrial zoning district. And that was, uh, made by the same vote that the council had for the first reading, which was 3-2.
3-2.
And that's the only information I have from council.
Was that just landmark site A and B? Did they choose to remove landmark C?
They chose... Yeah, that was part of our recommendation not to include landmark site C. So you're correct, it is just the A and B sites.
Okay. Thank you. Planning Commission comments or reports?
The only... The only comment I'd like to make is concerning the, um, Transit Village project plans that are coming forward. One of the things that I would like to see as in... In part of that packet is the plans for the East Side Connect and the location of the trees that are gonna be along Old County Road as part of that project, so that we have some idea where those trees are located in relation to, um, the... The trees that are gonna be planted as part of the Transit Village. Thank you.
Any other Planning Commissioner comments or reports?
I just have one, um, just to let you guys know. I will be going to the downtown parking study meeting on the 29th. Yeah, that's right, long time coming, so I was just wanting to let you know.
Been part of that for what, two years now?
That's right. Easiest commission ever. Great. Okay, uh, correspondence.
Um, yes, and I would just like to add to that. We, um, staff, um, in working with our consultant and within our budget, which is nice, um, we are going to host another community, uh, meeting for the downtown parking study presentation. So there will be an additional opportunity for those who couldn't make it during, um, the previous meetings we had on the 19th, um, to come to the City Hall Library on the second floor. This will be Thursday, July 18th at 6:30 PM. And our surveys are still available online for anyone who would like to fill, um, a parking survey. Um, and it's... You can do that, you know, the old-fashioned way with a hard copy or you can... We also have it available, um, using Survey Monkey, which you can just do, um, online at your own personal computer. So that's some upcoming news regarding, uh, that project. And then, um, as you might have noticed, um, the item that we wanted to bring before you tonight, um, which consisted of the LED billboard for Clear Channel, um, is been... Is being postponed to September 16th. So that'll be on the agenda, um, coming up on the 16th. September 16th. And that's all the information that I have.
So no other reports or comments on current projects? Thanks. Okay. Well, go ahead.
One quick question. And so the notice for the Clear Channel billboard that will go back out to anybody who's in that area to let them know that it's going to be on September 16th?
Yes, in fact, we, um, sent a notice indicating that it wouldn't be on the agenda for tonight. So we will indeed send out another notice, um, within the required time period prior to September, uh, 16th.
Any other questions for Lisa?
Alright, well then I think it's time we adjourn the meeting, so...
Meeting adjourned. Thanks, guys.